At 6:45 PM in the city council chambers will come to order. May we have the roll call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilman DeGarris.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilwoman Fox.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Abshir.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, we move to citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
Madam Mayor, Members of the council, I didn't have the opportunity to be at your retirement reception. I was with the high school team over at West Plains. We got you a plaque in honor of your 26 years of service.
Thank you.
When you retire, we'd kind of like for you to think of us every once in a while and everything. But it says, "Thank you for over 26 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Popper Bluff and your unwavering support to the Popper Bluff Fire Department." And we hope that you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much, Chief.
with Section 110.040 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri entitled, "Compensation of Councilmen," the city manager will present to each councilperson their salary for services to the City of Popper Bluff for fiscal year 2015-2016.
I'm just going to read one of the plaques and then I'll give each councilman their plaque. It has the city seal on it and has their big salary of $1 on it. The City of Popper Bluff presents to Ed DeGarris this $1 compensation in appreciation and gratitude for outstanding service to the community as city councilman for the Second Ward for 2015-2016, presented this 18th day of April 2016. They're the outline of Butler County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We also have a plaque for the Mayor Pro Tem presented to David Johnson in recognition of outstanding service and leadership to the City of Popper Bluff as Mayor Pro Tem for the year 2015-16, presented this 18th day of April 2016.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Betty, here's your dollar. I was told the other day, you must be the richest mayor we have because you've earned $27. Also, the mayor gets another plaque presented to Betty Abshir in recognition of outstanding service and leadership to the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri as mayor for the year 2015-2016.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Betty, as you can see, there's several former city managers in the audience, council members, mayors you've served with, city clerk, city managers, mayors, council members went together to buy you a 43-inch TV.
Turn it around.
Turn it around here. And you'll notice that you're only allowed to watch Cardinal baseball games. None of the other channels work.
Okay, that's great. That's great. Thank you all so very, very much.
I really appreciate that and you can be guaranteed I will be watching the Cardinals Moving on to our Item B, the city clerk will present to the city council. It's not the right one, is it? Is it? Oh, yeah. The city clerk will present to the city council for their approval, the abstract of votes cast at the municipal election held Tuesday, October 5, 2016.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Each councilperson, I've laid in front of you a tally sheet from the municipal election held on April the 5th. It also has a certified copy from Tommy Defendall. In the First Ward, Susan McVeigh ran against David Sloan. Susan had 135 votes and Mr. Sloan had 58 votes. So Susan was the winner in Ward 1. In the Third Ward, Jim Champion ran against Barbara Horton. Mr. Champion had 45 votes and Ms. Horton had 99. So Ms. Horton is the winner in the Third Ward. In the At Large Ward, Jerika Fox had 967 votes. Mr. Christman had 339 votes. And Larry Leeds was a write-in candidate through the county clerk's office. He had 12 votes. So Ms. Fox is declared the winner in the At Large Ward for a one-year term. We just need verbal.
We just need a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve the votes.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to approve the abstract of votes cast at the municipal election. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Item C, retiring city councilwoman from the At Large Ward, Jerika Fox will address the city council.
Yes, I just want to take this time to thank each one of you. I've enjoyed the last eight months that I've been on here and I look forward to serving with each of you for the next year. I'd also like to thank my constituents here in Popper Bluff. I appreciate all of the support and you guys trusting in me for another 12 months. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jerika. Next, Item D says retiring councilwoman from the Third Ward and Mayor Betty Abshir will address the city council. First of all, I want to thank all of you for being here this evening, my family and my Altrusa Club and all of you, my friends, those I've served with and worked with, and I really appreciate all of you being here. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank those responsible for the wonderful retirement reception and those who came and for the many cards that I've received at the reception and in the mail. When I realized we only had 15 minutes for this special meeting, my first thought was, well, how am I going to address 26 and a half years? And then I remembered, it wouldn't be a problem since I can't even remember what happened this morning. So, I sure couldn't go back 26 and a half years. My family moved to Popper Bluff in January 1942 when I was five years old, and I'm glad we did. I'm most grateful for the opportunity to have grown up in Popper Bluff. I'm grateful for a loving Christian dad and mom, family, teachers, church family, and friends like all of you that have touched and influenced my life. I'm thankful to God for the blessed life I've enjoyed. Thank you to my constituents in Ward 3 for their support through the years. And you know, many good things have happened to our city through the years and they've come about by the collaboration of the many city councils I've had the privilege of being a part of. And there are many more good things in the future for our city. I've enjoyed all of the department heads and city employees and I thank them all for a job well done. My best wishes to Barbara, my councilwoman now, all of the council, Mark, Pam, and other Mark. I thank all of you. God bless you. God bless America and God bless Popper Bluff, my home sweet home. And Item B, the city clerk will swear in the newly elected city council members.
I can have Ms. Fox, Ms. McVeigh, and Ms. Horton all come to the front here. I'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Julie Davis.
You solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that of the State of Missouri.
And that of the State of Missouri.
And of the ordinances of the City of Popper Bluff.
And the ordinances of the City of Popper Bluff.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of councilwoman.
Of councilwoman.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
And of said city to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And at this time, the chair will receive nominations for the office of mayor for the City of Popper Bluff for the year 2016-2017.
I would like to nominate Ed DeGarris as mayor.
Second. Are there any other nominations? At this time, is there a motion that nominations cease?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ed DeGarris is the mayor for 2016 through 2017. You get to come sit in this chair so that Ms. Barbara has a place to go.
Do you need this paper?
No. He's got one here. At this time, the chair will receive nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Popper Bluff for 2016 through 2017.
I'd like to nominate Philip Crocker.
Any other nominations? Do I have a motion that nominations cease?
I make a motion, nomination cease.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Philip Crocker is the Mayor Pro Tem for 2016 through 2017.
Need a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
I make a motion, we adjourn the special meeting.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? For a regular meeting of the city council of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri to be held on Monday, April 18, 2016 at 7:00 PM, and the council chambers will come to order. Please rise for an invocation by the Reverend Greg Kirk, who is also the chaplain of the
Thank the council members for the opportunity to pray and thank you for allowing me to chapel in the Fire Department as well. Father, I thank you for this time that we can be together and celebrate this wonderful legacy that Ms. Abshir is leaving. Father, I ask that you help us as we make decisions for our city and for our citizens, Lord, that you will guide us and help us to make the correct decisions before God and man. Lord, I thank you that our city has the ability to allow us to pray in public and, Father, we know that you will bless us for our efforts. I ask you in all these things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilwoman Fox.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Crocker.
Here.
And Mayor Ed Garris.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
I do know that's your dog. There's a lot going on right now.
May I remind everybody, please speak into the microphone.
We'll continue in just a minute. Ms. Kirby went back to her office to pick up an item.
Here she comes. There's time by the mayor.
Next item is proclamation and awards. The mayor will proclaim in the past week of April 10 through the 16, 2016, as the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week to thank all the dispatchers for a job well done. The dispatchers will meet me at the podium.
Whereas the city council of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri is always pleased to recognize those events have put credit upon themselves and the community. Whereas in 1991, Congress approved a resolution dedicating the second week of April as National Public Safety Health Communications Week, which recognizes the efforts of men and women devoted to handling lifesaving calls and requests for assistance. And from April 10 through April 16, the Popper Bluff Police Department honors the men and women who serve the City of Popper Bluff as health communicators with dedication and distinction. And during 2015, the Popper Bluff Police and Fire Communication handled over 87,783 non-emergency calls for service and over 24,276 emergency 9/11 calls for service. Public safety health communicators play a critical role in protecting life and property, in preservation of society and its laws, in provision of municipal services. Through floods, fires, accidents, and other emergencies, these public safety telecommunications are highly dedicated and deeply motivated. And they deserve our citizens and the city in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of their service. And public safety telecommunications are frontline contact with our citizens and the general public and are deeply charged with responsibility of maintaining citizen satisfaction and a positive image of our city and the general public. Now, therefore, I, Ed Garris, Mayor of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to hereby proclaim in the week of April 10 through April 16, 2016, as Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of these individuals. And with the word of I appearing to set my hand and call the official seal, the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to be effective since 18th day of April 2016. Thank you for it.
Lady forgot her.
Next item will be a consent agenda. The items of the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion second, approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next workshop item for discussion. Item A, the council review recommendation from Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding proposed electric avoided energy rates.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the council. Back in 2003, we passed a net metering for the City of Popper Bluff. In that, we had to have a avoided energy rate. We had our first applicant that's actually putting solar on his house and so we calculated the avoided energy rate. I believe you have that in your packet. This was discussed at an earlier advisory board meeting and would recommend the approval of this.
No questions, entertain a motion, move this item to the voting session on May 2nd.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council review recommendation from Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding bids received for an automatic meter reading system. Box.
Mayor, Members of the council, I believe in your packet, you received a bid tab. We recently went out to bid on our water meters for AMR, automatic meter reading. The low bid was Midwest meter out of Cape Girardeau, amount of $1,815,186. We discussed this at our earlier advisory board and would also recommend we approve this. Any questions?
How many meters were that bid?
That was every meter in town. It was like 77, 56 residential, 1,900 commercial, industrial.
How would those be read? You've told them.
Drive-by.
Drive-by?
Drive-by and a radio read. I will say this number will probably change since we haven't looked at every meter. Some of those we can probably keep and retrofit them so we might actually save a little bit of money. But as part of the bid tab, they did give us pricing on all the meters.
And that's them install them too, right?
That's correct. That's installed.
No other questions, entertain a motion, and second, move this item to the voting session to be held May 2nd.
Make a motion, we move this to voting session May 2nd, this item.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding bids received for the backup wells.
Might as well just stay there.
I know. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor, Members of the council. This is for the last of our SRF Phase 3 projects. It's on backup wells. This will include the installation of two backup wells, valve boxes, and all necessary appliances to tie the wells into the existing 20-inch raw water line leading to the water treatment plant. I believe you had a copy of the attached bid tab. The low bidder was Burge Irrigation out of Puxico, Missouri, for the amount of $345,132. Greg Bell, City's engineer for Smith &amp; Company, has reviewed all bids and would recommend the approval of the low bid from Burge Irrigation LLC. This was also discussed at an earlier advisory board and would recommend the approval. Any questions?
I spoke to a couple of engineers in the Butler County Water District, and this is for an emergency backup, right?
That's correct.
I understand that we have lines running parallel to them. They have excess wells. It's been said that we could just tee into their wells in an emergency situation. We could tap into their system and they could supply Popper Bluff with water for quite a period of time.
DNR has asked us, we've had numerous letters from them stating they want us to have a backup source.
That would be a backup source.
Well, let me finish. I don't know what they're capable of, how many millions of gallons a day, but our low flow is about 2 MGD, our high flow is 4.5 MGD. I doubt they can meet those flows.
I understand they have a number of wells and they are.
Well, they could have 100 gallons of metal well.
Drastically underusing them. They are well-producing wells. That's what the engineers said. I don't know. Think it'd be worth investigating.
No other questions? entertain a motion, and second, move this item to the voting session to be held May 2nd.
I make a motion, we move this to the voting session on May 2nd. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item D, the city council review a recommendation from Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding bids received for the installation of distribution lines.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the council. This project includes the replacement of approximately 6,100 linear feet of 2-inch and smaller water mains on the east side of the city with 6-inch PVC water lines and all required fittings and valves. I believe you also had a copy of the bid tab. Low bidder was MB Construction LLC out of Monticello, Missouri, for the amount of $284,420. Greg Bell, Smith &amp; Company, has reviewed the bids and would recommend the approval of the low bid from MB Construction LLC. This was discussed at an earlier advisory board meeting and would recommend the approval. Any questions?
Is this going to be started this summer or this year?
This year. Thank you.
No further questions, entertain a motion, and second, move this item to the voting session to be held May 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council review a recommendation from Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding bids received for the UV disinfection system project.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the council. This includes the installation of one duty and one standby UV or ultraviolet disinfection unit. Project also consists of the required piping modifications to the existing piping, including all valves and fittings. Also includes a building and structure to house the UV disinfection units as well as all required electrical wiring. I believe you had a copy of the bid tab in your packet. The low bidder was RL Persons Construction, Inc., out of Popper Bluff, Missouri, for the amount of $595,000. Again, Greg Bell, Smith &amp; Company, has reviewed all bids and would recommend the approval of the low bid from RL Persons Construction. This was discussed at an earlier advisory board and recommend the approval. Any questions?
What's the standard life for all this?
For which part? The wells or the UV?
Let's go with the UV for right now.
Greg, do you know?
25, 25 years.
There's no other questions, entertain a motion, and second, move this to the voting session to be held May 2nd.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the City Council review a recommendation from Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the status of the Morrison Road Power Transformer. Box.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At our Morrison Road substation, we have two power transformers, which we call TX1 and TX2. We lost TX1 in August 9th of 2015. We placed the existing load at Morrison onto TX2, the backup, on March 19th, 2016. This year, a car hit a pole causing TX2 to trip out on differential, which put us in a critical situation on electrical service. Prior to that, we had sent TX1 to the repair shop for evaluation, and the repair is more than the cost of a brand-new transformer. Current purchasing policy allows an emergency purchase without going completely through the bid process. In an emergency situation, the city manager may authorize an emergency purchase, and the city manager has authorized an emergency purchase for a new power transformer. We still went out, we got four bids. I believe you were also given this in your packet. Bid tab, the low bidder was Fletcher Reinhardt Company out of Bridgeton, Missouri, in the amount of $437,500. Staff has reviewed the bids and would recommend the approval of the low bid from Fletcher Reinhardt Company out of Bridgeton. This was discussed at an earlier advisory board and would also recommend the approval.
Mark, Massingham, how does this impact our budget for this year?
I'd have to ask Bill for that. The one transformer that sat down back in August, you know, we're going through an insurance process, I'm not sure where that's going to end up, but...
Yeah, the engineer, so our carrier, well, the boy that hit the pole that caused the damage got dropped from their insurance. But either way, the power transformer went to the shop, was evaluated. Our insurance will actually pick it up, and then they'll subrogate back to the previous. It appears that we'll get a check for approximately $286,000. The difference between the 286 and the 437 is what we'll have to make up.
Okay.
That's a utility budget item, not a city hall budget item.
And how long does it take for the...
32 to 30...
Quite a while, isn't it?
Yeah, 32 to 34 weeks is what the low bidder was quoted.
So you're looking at 2017 for this?
I'm sorry.
You're looking at 2017 for this or very end of this year?
34 weeks, I could still make late this year.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I'd like to do. The ones that were at the utility building today, I probably saw the damage on W Highway. Again, the same transformer took another hit. You know, we can place that load on two other substations, we're fine. It's if we lose one more, instead of being down one and a backup, now we're down three. And it puts a little bit different twist in the town.
City employees install that, or will the company install that?
We will. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they'll, manufacturer will bring it in, it'll be filled with oil. What we'll do is set it on the pad with a hydro crane. May or may not come with the radiators attached. I think this one does not. We'll have to install the high-side bushings, do some electrical tests, and then we'll be good to go.
No other questions, entertain a motion, and second to move this item to the voting session to be held May 2nd.
Move to the voting, I make a motion to move this to the voting session on May 2nd.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the City Council review change order number one relative to the Fair Street Bridge, Project STP 5100008. Mr. Massingham?
Yeah, on the Fair Street Bridge, when they started putting in the pilings, I think they had to go an extra 10 feet on each of the pilings, which wasn't planned for. If you've got any specific questions, Dom's here to answer those. Total cost is $11,495.
I'd like to know why the city's responsible for that, since we had an engineer do this, design this, and wouldn't that be the engineer's design problem?
As part of our, as part of our design, we had to drill some bore holes, which we calculated the bearing capacity of the soil. The problem with that is that in doing so, we only drill two separate holes, one on each side of the bridge. I believe there's at least eight different pilings, so there's eight different locations in which soil bearing is supposed to be calculated, or has to be calculated, and we don't necessarily know those bearing capacities until the actual pilings are driven, so that creates the issue.
Okay, but I would still think that the engineer designed it, he would be responsible for that. I just feel that.
I understand. The only thing I can go back to is that we did do the bearing capacity in two locations. So until we do the actual, drive the actual pilings, we don't necessarily know what that is in those locations.
On those two that you drilled, were they okay, or are they going to have to go down further?
I believe that's, they're okay, so...
I just didn't understand why we'd have to pay for this one.
Wouldn't it have been quite more expensive if you had done the soil test on all eight opposed to two?
Correct.
And so possibly this is not as expensive as what that would have been?
Well, I'm not sure exactly how much it costs to drill each hole, but yes, it would add to the project upfront as opposed to towards the end. So to minimize the cost upfront, we do two holes, in the hopes that that will cover all the piles that are driven.
Sure, I think that makes good sense, uh-huh.
No further questions, entertain a motion, and second to move this item to the voting session to be held May 2nd.
I make a motion to move item G to the voting session to be held on May 2nd.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go on to action required items. Bill number 7900, the City Council will take action on ordinance adopting a voluntary flood buyout policy for the City of Popper Bluff relative to the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Fund.
I make a motion to read bill number 7900 in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance adopting a voluntary flood buyout policy for the City of Popper Bluff relative to the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Fund.
Move for second reading of bill number 7900 in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance adopting a voluntary flood buyout policy for the City of Popper Bluff relative to the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Fund.
Move for adoption, bill number 7900.
Second.
Have a motion for, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to move for adoption of bill number 7900.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, bill number 7900 is passed. Bill number 7901, the City Council will take action on ordinance amending chapter 645 of the Code ordinances entitled Taxi Cabs to include a section relative to limousine services and requirements for this service.
Move for first reading of bill number 7901 in caption only.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance amending the Popper Bluff Code of Ordnances, Chapter 645 of the Code of Ordnances entitled Taxi Cabs to include a section relative to limousine services and requirements for this service.
Motion for the second reading?
Motion for the second reading, under caption only, please.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance amending the Popper Bluff Code of Ordnances, Chapter 645 of the Code of Ordnances entitled Taxi Cabs to include a section relative to limousine services and requirements for this service.
Move for adoption of bill number 7901.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any question or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, bill number 7901 is passed. Item CC, the City Council of the City of Popper Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the Openshooting Meeting Law, Section 610.021.1, 02.2, 03.9, 011, 012, 013, and 14, revised statutes of Missouri.
I make a motion, we move it into closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Massingham?
Just a reminder, this Saturday's buff up the bluff, so everybody will get out and clean up all their junk and get it done. It's free for city residents. Also, over the weekend, we had the Scotty McCurry concert down at the Coliseum. Had an attendance of around 1,600 people. We don't have the final numbers in, but it's a successful concert. And the Mayor gave his proclamation to the dispatchers. I've worked for the city 25 years, and I've been over in that dispatch center on and off for years, and on a slow day, I wouldn't want their job. They do a great job, and they're to be thanked for that. That's all I have.
I'd like to announce that this Saturday, the Chamber of Commerce and Three Rivers Community Colleges will put on the Merchant Showcase. Everybody in the community is invited to come to that. The hours are 10 to 2.
If nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can adjourn.